This meeting is being recorded. Councilman Ferguson, do you mind doing the invocation, please?
Father God, we just thank you and we give you the glory and the honor. We just magnify your name today. I'm so grateful that you have kept us another day that we've been able to meet. And we ask for your guidance and your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We ask for Jesus that with everything that's presentable, we will have clarity on it in Jesus' name. And we ask that you protect, continue to watch over the city, the employees and the citizens. And we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Hello, everyone. Councilwoman Jones?
Here.
Thank you, Councilman Harry.
Here.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Thanks. Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
President Curtis? Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, discussion. Okay. There's no discussion. Madam Clerk can do a roll call on the accepting the agenda, please.
Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yeah.
Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes.
We have seven, this is passed.
All right. Well, first on our agenda is introduction of Urban Edge Properties. And I'd like to invite them to this meeting. And Ms. Danielle DeVita? Is it?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, President Curtis, this is Edward Gibbs. I'm the attorney for Urban Edge. And I'd kind of like to do an introduction, if that's okay.
Yes, you may, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, President Curtis and members of the City Council and Mayor Cross. I see Mayor Cross up there as well. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Edward Gibbs. I am a land use attorney. And my offices are located, actually just across the street from Woodmore Town Center, right off of Caraway Court in Largo. And so I have been pleased and proud to have been able to to represent the original developers of Woodmore Town Center. I've worked on that project since, really, it was dirt. And I have been involved, really, just throughout the entire development. So I would like to, I would like to thank Mayor Cross for her initiative in helping to facilitate and actually schedule our appearance here this evening. She reached out to me and so we appreciated that. We had previously met with County Executive also Brooks and Councilwoman Ivy, virtually, of course, in both instances, to introduce the Urban Edge folks who, of course, are the new owners of the commercial component at Woodmore Town Center. I would like to just, to just share a few facts about Urban Edge. Urban Edge is a publicly traded real estate investment trust. They are located really in Manhattan. And they like to manage, they like to acquire, they like to develop and redevelop retail centers. They, they really were focused in the New York metropolitan area, but they have branched out and they own centers across the country, reaching as far as California. They have four different retail properties in Maryland that they own. This is their first acquisition in Prince George's County. And shortly before the end of the year, they settled on, on their acquisition of the retail component at Woodmore Town Center. So they are here this evening. I think also Mr. Chris Duffy, who was the, was the manager at Woodmore Town Center when Prudential had the ownership interest. He is continuing on in that capacity on behalf of Urban Edge. I'm very proud to be able to continue to represent Urban Edge. They bring a wealth of experience and, and great background. And, and I know that they're quite excited about this opportunity. And so at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Danielle and have her say a few words and possibly introduce the, the Urban Edge team who's with us this evening. So thank you very much, President Curtis.
Ed, and thank you very much, Mayor Cross and Councilman Curtis and the entire council for having us on tonight. We're, we're brand new, you know, to the area, but we're really so excited about this asset. This was a monster acquisition for us and something that we feel very happy to be a part of. Ed and Chris Duffy have obviously been with this property since the very beginning. And when we were working on acquiring it, it was amazing to me, the way that it evolved and how it just grew and grew and grew and how special it is and how critical it is. The things that we heard up in New York and New Jersey about, about this asset is just that it is the crown jewel. There's no question that we feel about it in that way, too. And we're really very happy to be a part of it. I haven't gotten down there yet. I'm coming down in March. I'm the executive vice president of development. So what roles to me is the, the construction side, the entitlement side. So, but I am also responsible for the marketing side. So, you know, I'm involved in it on a day to day already because I know that we've already had some press releases go out with regard to new tenants. So we're hoping, obviously, to continue that trend. That's not something that's going to stop anytime soon. And as Ed had said, we had a few phone calls already and we've been already told that, you know, everybody wants more food, everybody wants more places to eat. So we recognize how special this place is and we're going to continue to bring in tenants who are going to make you proud. On the call with me today is, we're lucky to have Mr. Wilmester, Chris Wilmester, who's our executive vice president and chief operating officer. And he's also the leasing connoisseur. He is the best of the best. We also have Justin Lustig, who isn't too bad himself, who's our vice president of leasing. We have Joe DiGiorgio, who is our vice president of asset management. And we have Corey Thompson, my right hand, who I can't do anything without, who is our director of development and finance. And so the team you see before you is the team that is responsible really for Woodmore. I'm missing a marketing person, but nonetheless, these are your faces. So we're very happy to meet you. We're very glad that we could do this Zoom call so that you could see who we are. And we really appreciate this opportunity to be, to be in front of you. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And if the council doesn't mind going around to introduce themselves as well, we can start off with Vice President Ferguson.
Good evening. I'm Angela Ferguson, vice president of the council.
Ms. Guillaume?
Good evening. I'm Cat Guillaume Delamar. I am a native New Yorker, so I appreciate hearing New York accents on this call this evening. But I am councilwoman at large at Glen Arden. And I also live across the street from the Woodmore Town Center at Glen Arden Commercial site. Thank you.
Mr. Hairston, Councilman Hairston.
How you doing? I'm Councilman Hairston, Councilman of Ward Two, City of Glen Arden. Good evening.
Ms. Jones?
Good evening. I'm Robin Jones, Councilwoman at large for the City of Glen Arden. And I consider Woodmore Town Center my cheap gym because I do a lot of walking around, around the area. And also, I understand, well, not understand, I've already signed up. Woodmore Pilates is moving in the end of March. So that'll be a great asset to, because the gym I was going to is closed down. So that's going to be a great asset to the town center. And I understand from the owner that they've got a lot of people already signed up. So it's going to be a great asset to our town center. Thank you so much.
Councilman Harry?
Councilman James Herring, Councilman for Ward One. And I've been with this project also since it was dirt. So I'm really interested in seeing what's coming. And that it's going to be a boon and a value to the citizens in this communion, in this community. Thanks.
Councilman Fareed?
Hi, I'm Councilwoman Erica Freed, representing Ward Three, which is the ward in which Woodmore Town Center is located. I also live at Woodmore Town Center in one of the single family homes. I'm also from New York, if you could not tell from my accent. And so I'm just happy to hear what you all have planned for this crown jewel, as you say. Thank you.
And we also have our city manager, Ms. Barber. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Thank you. My name is Consuela Barber. And as President Curtis said, I am the city manager for the City of Glen Arden.
And I believe, at least you met Danielle and Edward Mayor Cross, Mayor Cross.
Hello, and thank you so much, Urban Edge Properties. We are so glad to have you on this call. Thank you, Council President. It is such an opportunity to have the Woodmore Town Center of Glen Arden in your portfolio. We look forward to the lifestyle that you will bring to our community to continue to bring it the edgy, responsible shopping and as well as ingenuitive spirit that has built the city. So we thank you so much again for this call. We look forward to it. I've already gotten people wanting to reach out to you, Ed, about buying some space, renting some space. So this is good to fill some of those holes there. But we look forward to working with you and thank you again.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is, this is it. Mr. President, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we're certainly more than happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. I know that, you know, having just settled on the acquisition at the end of the year, Urban Edge is really, you know, getting their arms around the entire project. It is a major acquisition. And I know they view it in exactly the manner in which Danielle framed it. It is, it is the crown jewel. They understand that it is the premier commercial center, certainly in Prince George's County and beyond. And, and, and they, they have, they're filled with great excitement as to what they may be able to do as they move forward. Of course, they currently now own all of the existing built commercial buildings. And they also own, there's a vacant 22 acres, which is really behind the Costco. And they, they own that as well. And that, for many years, was earmarked for office. Then it became earmarked for office and potentially institutional uses and perhaps a conference center. But as we all know, the office market is, is really non-existent these days unless you have a build to suit, usually for a governmental user at the end. So, so that's going to be an area where they're going, where Urban Edge is going to have an opportunity to try and look at some, some new ideas for possibly that area of the center. But, but it is, it is rather early in the process. And Danielle, please, you know, jump in anytime you, you are.
No, you're, you've got it. You've got it.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we, you know, I, when, when Urban Edge was doing their due diligence for the project, I explained to them that this property was annexed into the city in 1988, when McCormick Properties actually rezoned it to the MXT zone. And so it's been, it's been part of the City of Glen Arden, Town of Glen Arden, since, since 1988. And, and so there's a long history there as well. And so they're just, they're looking forward to, to interacting with the city, to being in contact with the city constantly and to presenting to the city any new ideas that they have. And certainly, they welcome your ideas, your concerns, your questions and your suggestions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, and I just want to echo on something that Mr. Gibbs said. I mean, I'm really, really, really hope that the Urban Edge Properties do continue to communicate with the mayor and the council on everything. Because the bottom line is, I mean, we don't want to be left out in the dark. And we don't want to have to be running down or getting last minute notices from the Prince George's County Planning Board that something's been submitted to redo the DSP like we've, like what has happened previously in the past. So I'm just hoping that communication is there with, with, with you and the city so that we can, you know, it'd be a win-win for both organizations.
Understood.
Councilman Fareed?
Yeah, thank you. I haven't, but with the first, though, just echoing a little bit of what Mr. Herring said around being notified of what's going on. I think it's very important that the citizens are engaged as you're looking to kind of fill those recent spaces. We understand that from a zoning perspective, there are certain, you know, allowances for what you can have in that space. And that doesn't really entail specifying the types of retailers that are there. But what we've heard in the community is that there's a strong need for healthy food options, less, kind of, big box stores. We need something that's more tailored to our demographic, which is probably different than some of the other properties you have in terms of them being large properties, right? This is a very different type of demographic, both racially and financially. And making sure that the needs of the citizens that are going to be your primary consumers are being met at those stores. So if there's an opportunity to come in front of the council and engage with the citizens to get feedback on, you know, types of retailers or even making allowances in that space for entrepreneurs or business owners within the City of Glen Arden. I think that would be a tremendous partnership to make sure that, you know, it doesn't eating the richer, but also being poured right back into the community, particularly those who live here. So those are, you know, some, you know, big concerns of mine, how we can kind of foster that communication. So if we kind of think about ways to do that. And if you have any plans now for this space, I know you're talking about that 22 acres right now and potentially being used for institutional purposes or office space, kind of understanding what is that space going to be used for? I think that is of particular concern to the citizens who live right over there, you know, closest to, to understand kind of, you know, are they going to have a view? If they're going to be taken away by a large institutional building? Those types of things would be helpful to know to kind of get in front of. So those are, those are my main comments right now. I have some more, but I'll just kind of allow the rest of my colleagues to get in there.
Councilwoman Guillaume? And then I'll come to you, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you, Council President Curtis. Actually, the points that I was going to met, were, was planning on mentioning was already stated. But, you know, I'll yield my time back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Jones?
Yeah, I only have two concerns. And one is the one that Councilwoman Guillaume mentioned because the neighbor that lives right there at the edge of that property, there's the Coscos and there's Woods. And then on the other side of the Woods is the neighbor's house. And they showed me a diagram of something that was about last year that was supposed to come to that area that was like a parking garage and office space. But I, I can assure them now that, right now, that that will not be happening because we couldn't find anything in the county to say, this is what they were really going to do. It was just a diagram with what, a perspective of what someone was planning. But we couldn't find any DSPs in the county. So I guess right now, that's probably going to be off the table. My other question about the area that you've acquired is cosmetics. Because in my walk this weekend, I noticed that in the roundabouts, some of the brick is coming up out of the, the streets. And I noticed the one closest to the Nordstroms, someone had come along and put cement in to, to kind of like keep it from getting like a pothole. Just, to me, would be like a Band-Aid patch. So my, my basic concern will be cosmetics. They keep it pretty clean over there, but they could do a little bit better job, especially around the Navy Federal Credit Union, that whole strip where there's a lot of traffic, where people are coming to purchase food. You know, trash gets dropped. And they could do a little bit better job over there. So my, my concerns would be cosmetics to make sure that it stays clean and inviting for people to come. Thank you.
Joe, do you have something you'd like to?
Yeah, I would like to just give you a little bit of feedback on that. So that was one of the observations that I noticed as I first came on the property. And I've been there three times since, you know, pre-acquisition and post-acquisition. So, you know, the, the prior owner was supposed to get that work done prior to closing, but they did not. I think there were issues with getting a vendor that could get it completed within the allotted time. So we do have that in our budget to complete as soon as possible, as soon as the weather breaks. So we will be addressing those cracked up, you know, roundabouts. It's a priority for us, absolutely.
So you've seen that there's more than one?
Yeah, there's three that need attention. Yes.
All right, thank you.
And I would just add, President Curtis, pleasure to meet you and all the councilmen. And, and great to see you again, Mayor Cross. So it's great to be on this call. I wanted to just introduce myself as Chris Wilmester. I know Danielle had done that before. And I am EVP and CEO of Urban Edge. And I actually relocated from Maryland up to New Jersey and New York to work. And I still live in Maryland and I'm actually calling from my house in Maryland. I live over on the Montgomery County side. And just a little snapshot of my history, I was with the company some of you may be familiar with for almost 30 years. I joined there in 1990, a company called Federal Realty Investment Trust. And if you're familiar with some of those properties that federal developed, whether it be the current Pike and Rose or downtown Rockville Town Center or Bethesda Row or Village at Sherrlington, those are all assets that I, and different stages of my career, where they oversaw the leasing and/or development on projects that, those projects. And so I was thrilled when we learned of the opportunity to acquire Woodmore Town Center and we went really hard at it. And I just love the fact that we now have a foothold in the Glen Arden community. Very much look forward to working with everyone on this call and can assure you that, you know, we know the best projects are the ones that best serve the needs of the surrounding community. There's always a balance in figuring out what the right answers are towards that, but that's all collaborative and no great project happens without great public support. So everything that you're stating resonates, I know, with Danielle and myself. But please know that the hands of this project are not just in people from New York and New Jersey, that you actually have a resident in Maryland that, that is very committed to helping deliver on making this property, which is already very special, even more special, and something that the community continues to embrace for many years to come.
He actually wanted to go to the meeting tonight. And I said, I don't think there is a meeting. I think we're all virtual.
I'm looking to see who has the best background. Maybe I'd come in there, we'd be hanging out. It looks like Mayor Cross has got a, she's in pretty good digs right now. I like that Prince George's sign behind her.
Well, thank you. One day, hopefully, soon, we'll be able to come back together in person. And, you know, you're more than welcome to, to attend a later meeting when we do meet back in person, so.
Great.
Any other?
Statement?
Oh, sorry, Michelle.
It's one thing that I do want to bring to the attention of the, of the Urban Edge Company is that, like I said, I do a lot of walking around the complex because of the fact, you know, it's just there and it's easy to do. But I noticed that we have a wide demographic of people that come in and out of that complex, that, that come to the Wegmans, that come to the Costco. So don't be, you know, I'm not saying not focus on the community. Yes, we want to focus on the community, but understand that there is a wide demographic of different people, cultures, races, ethnic groups that come to that shopping center. I mean, it is just across the board, just different people, looking for, for different spectrums of people, looking for different things that that shopping center provides to them.
Understood. Regional draw.
Yeah.
Corey, did you want to say something about that very point?
Yeah, when we talk about community, Councilwoman Jones, we think about everyone that's coming there. So not just the people that are in the immediate area. I was actually in DC, dropped by Woodmore this weekend. And I was at dinner on Saturday night with, with a friend of a friend who lives just south of College Park. And he's at Wegmans every other weekend. So to your point, there's people coming from all over Prince George's County to shop there. So it's so exciting to hear from him about his experience and how he loves going there. It's, I love your story about Woodmore Town Center being your gym. I think we'll definitely tell that to our colleagues at work. That's a wonderful story. But hearing the passion that all of you have about Woodmore Town Center just gets us excited. When we saw this asset, even though we have a nice portfolio of assets that Mr. Gibbs talked about, this is a really special place. And this is one that we were really excited about. And we, Danielle and I are just sitting back dreaming about what we can do with those 22 acres. I know that Justin and Chris are sitting back there dreaming about tenants that they could bring in to even take the center to the next level. So it's really wonderful to hear your, all, all of your perspectives. And we look forward to working with you as we take this place to the next level.
All right. Well, I was, Councilman Fareed?
Yes, I, I let, I wanted to put up my last comment. And I think it's pretty, maybe insignificant to others, but it's pretty important to me. It's around the branding of where we are. I, I would like to see more reinforcement of the City of Glen Arden in, you know, where these stores are located. Most of them, if you look them up, they say Lanham. And while we share a post office with Lanham, this Glen Arden. And I want to make sure that we're getting the benefit of, you know, the fact that Woodmore Town Center is actually in the City of Glen Arden and that that is clear. So whether it be on signage or whether it be on the agreements with people who are getting that retail space, that their address should be Glen Arden, Maryland and not Lanham, Maryland, I think that would be, that would be great, tremendous for us. And that's my final comment.
All right. And Michelle, do you have one last comment?
One last comment is, hopefully, I'm sure you all will partner with Wegmans. Because before they came, I'm sure they did a demographic study and a study to find out who's going to be coming in and out. I mean, I, I think they've done a tremendous job in being able to serve the people that to the shop, to come to the store.
As part of our due diligence, we spoke both with Wegmans, Costco and many of the other retailers in there. And I will assure you that Wegmans and Costco had nothing but wonderful things to say about the Town of Glen Arden, Prince George's County, the regional draw. They bring consumers in from the District of Columbia. They bring people as far east as Anarundel County over to, to the site. And for all that traffic heading out to the beaches and the reaches through, on the weekend traffic in the summertime and in spring and fall, I think that they're also getting the benefit of this site being so close to the Route 50 exit. So I totally agree with you that we're, we're drawing on a regional basis and, and we want to be an equal opportunity provider of services to everybody. And I think that just enhances the community and sheds a really bright light on Glen Arden as to the wonderful town that it is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you for your comments. It's all very helpful.
Well, we would like to thank you guys for attending this meeting. Really appreciate you taking the time out to come introduce yourselves and answer our questions. And Mayor Cross, did you have any last words as well?
Give me, thank you. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members. Thank you so much for your attention to this meeting. Thank you, Urban Edge Properties. Mr. Gibbs, as always, a pleasure. meeting. Thank you, Urban Edge Properties. Mr. Gibbs, as always, a pleasure. We are very much so appreciative for all that you will bring to our community. We thank you for acknowledging the conversation from our council and taking that for action. We definitely want to make sure that our tax base for those retailers, you know, that we know exactly what's happening in that respect as well, to make sure that we can keep the retailers that are there and bring in retailers again, that will enhance the quality of life and the shopping experience here for our flagship. We thank you so much and thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, well, we don't want to bore you with a very long meeting. So you know, you're, you're welcome to join us, but you're also welcome to leave if you would like. So thanks again and have a great week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks to everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay. In your packets, council members, there were, there should be the review of the minutes from November of the first, another one on January 11th, January 13th and January 18th. And so all the minutes that we had from the last session, I mean, last session and this session will vote on them at the regular meeting next week. So just a heads up that we'll be pushing through the approval of the meeting minutes. And with that, we will go into administrative reports. And so we're doing something a little bit different this, this way to cut down on the length of the meetings. Mayor Cross has her town hall that she does. And so unless there are questions on the mayor's report, then we'll allow that mayor's report to be reported at the town hall for the mayor. But if the council has any questions, feel free, we can ask questions of, because I know those in the package that we received beforehand. And we have the ability to ask questions. And then the citizens next week will have ability to ask questions either at the the meeting or at the town hall. And this, Mayor Cross, when is your town hall? Do you want to advertise it real quick?
So we will have a community forum this week. Actually, it's not going to be the town hall. The community forum will address the national agenda of mental health and wellness in our communities. So if all the same, we'll need to report tonight if the council would not mind.
Well, we, we can come back to that. Let me come back to that. So the, the first report up is the the city manager for Ms. Barber. And Ms. Ms. Jones, if you could give access for her to share her screen.
Thank you, Council, President Curtis. So I'll be quick so that the mayor can get to her part if she is allowed to do that. Just wanted to keep you all in the loop. We have in the budget, some funding for a public works truck. In particular, it's $55,000 that was allocated in the capital assets part of the budget. And we would like to go ahead and procure that truck for public works. As you may know, trucks and vehicles are hard to come by these days because of the chip shortages. So many of the manufacturers have stopped manufacturing back in September, October of last year. And so what they are doing now is they are taking essentially pre-orders for trucks that are going to be built. And so what we did is we tried to find a truck that was on the lot of some of the local dealerships. We were unable to find that. And what we had to do is we actually are, are suggesting that we piggyback on a state contract from Pennsylvania. It's called Co-Stars and it is with a firm out of, I think it's Lancaster, Pennsylvania. It's called New Holland. And they have a Ford F-350 truck that's available. And I can provide the specs on the truck. But essentially it's a 2022 Ford F-350 four by four crew cab with the eight foot box and it has pretty much all of the things that we were wanting to have the truck. The truck, I, my understanding is, is that the truck is being procured to assist not only in the regular day-to-day work with the staff, but also to be able to assist with snow removal for the city. And so what it does have is it includes the snow plow and camper package and it also includes a heavy duty alternator so that it can be used to push snow. And it also has the dump insert and the plow already installed. And so wanted to know if that would be approved by the council. You have to forgive me on the protocol. But we would like to go ahead and get that pre-ordered so that we can get that in the works for the public works division. And I'll answer any questions that you have at this time. And I can provide a copy. I can pull up the copy of the contract with Pennsylvania Co-Stars with New Holland if you want to.
Are there any questions by the councils? Mayor, Mayor Jones, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, the we already have a truck with snow plow on front of it, don't we?
We do. We have a regular, I guess it's a Ford F-150, F-250 with the snow plow. But I think the, the, as I was talking with the mayor, the hope is, is that when it has the snow, that we would have a snow contractor come in, do the first pass and then second and third passes, if necessary, would be done by public works. So it would be on a much larger scale than just pushing the snow at the municipal building, but it would actually be pushing snow on the streets for the residents. So that's why the second truck is required.
That, that depends on what, like, what depth of snow we have. I mean, if it snows real heavy, like five to six inches. And then after that, it continues to snow, maybe another five to six inches. I think the contractor might be more feasible, but that's my thinking. But the, the truck that we already had that has a snow plow on it, what year, that's, that's, that, that was the brand, the last truck that we bought. So what year was that truck?
I'm sorry, my internet cut out and so I didn't hear everything that you said.
I would appreciate it if you would send that, give us documentation of what it is that the public, what, what you're suggesting so that we can read and find out, determine what the administration is trying to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
Couple of questions for the city manager. Also, I would, I mean, it would make it much easier if we were given all the specs on what you wanted to purchase ahead of time, so we can actually ask questions and be a little bit more informed. It's one thing to hear you tell it, it's another thing to read about it. I prefer to have the paperwork in front of me. Thank you. Also, looking at your report, you have on here looking at a company called Bills.com?
Yes.
What is that?
So Bill.com is a platform that would allow the council to sign checks electronically so that we wouldn't have to have the members come in to the municipal center, the municipal town hall every week to sign checks. They would be able to look at all the documentation online and they would be able to electronically sign the checks. All three of them would still be required to sign a check. But what they would have to do is they would approve the checks on Bill.com.
So does that also involve the check request approval?
It does not involve the check request approval. It only involves the payment of the check and the signing and approval of the check. But the check request approval would be part of the documentation that could be seen along with the invoices for the checks.
Okay. So it's an added expense to keep them coming into the building to sign checks.
It is an expense. It's not a great expense. I'd have to find out exactly how much it was, but it is a convenience factor mostly. Yes, sir.
Okay. Another question. I'm looking at this report here. It says from Nate George, Gold Room Coordinator.
Let's say.
On the tape. Oh, okay. So she, let me see with this. So we haven't had any. So we booked eight, let me see, Gold Room events. Cause three gratis events in a go. And what three gratis events did we have in Gold Room? Do you know?
I think that, yeah, I think there was some misunderstanding on the taste part and she did not understand the terminology. Those, those gratis events were actually, if mayor, if you correct, can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were from previous events. They were actually from Decembers, I think.
Okay.
And no, you're correct, city manager. Those were not to be on the January reporting. They were already reported on the December reporting. So the council will need to have an updated report from the Gold Room. And also, forgive me, to Councilwoman Jones's inquiry, Hertrick Fleet Services, that was a 2017 Ford truck that we purchased. And then we purchased a 2018 truck with the snow plow package. So that was from legislation April 2018. Over.
Do you, I thought we purchased one more recently than that.
That's the legislation that I have, sir.
Okay. I thought we purchased one more recently than that. Okay. That's it for me. Thank you, city manager.
Yes, sir. President Curtis, you're off the
Thank you. I just want to, Mr. Harry, Councilman Harry, let you know about, more about Bill.com. It, it actually is a tool that helps save money. Currently, we're printing out checks, signing them. Bill.com is really a tool that was, makes it more convenient in the accounts payable department, gives you opportunity to submit your bills online, have them approved online and then a payment process online. And the, the cost benefits come from really the ACH side of it. So it might cause, let's say, for example, I don't know, 60 cents to send out a check where it costs 10 cents for to do the electronic, electronic funds transfer. And so it is supposed to be a cost-saving tool and the ability for staff not to spend most of their time on a transactional level, trying to print checks, you know, cut checks, order check stock, you know, that's an expense to and really cut down that time on that transactional level, give the finance staff more flexibility to be, to be more strategic and to focus on other things. So as, yeah, I think it's a little bit unfair to look at it as an extra cost. But you know, it could be interesting if we did have a, a cost analysis of what it costs to cut a check the way we're currently doing it versus what it'll cost in a more automated process.
Thank you for that information. It's almost, it's similar to like what I use in my job with Concur. We do the same thing, but we cut our checks. We don't allow the company to cut our checks. We don't allow them to send out and we don't do ACH. Cause the issue comes down to does Bill Concur, I mean, Bill.com integrate with Abella, MIP in order to get the information into the general ledger? Or are they going to have to do a general, general entry every week for that expense? Now, I know in, in Concur, it's a major issue with the integration into the software package, the accounting software package. So that's something that needs to be looked at. I just, I just feel that, you know, the city doesn't cut that many checks where it should be a major issue for them to do do that job that's been, been done manually for years. I don't, I just don't see the need for it myself. I think that, you know, being a small government, we need to be on top of everything that's going on. When it comes down to our funds and our finances. Even with me, with a bigger organization, with us, we have a lot of checks and balances in place to make sure. And my thing is with ACH is you gotta be very careful also with those because if you don't have your filters on, somebody can easily tap into your account, the ACH or wire. So. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Kind of got reshuffled here. Oh, there you go. City Manager Barber, was that all? I think it, three bullet points to ARPA Fund Plan.
Yes, I apologize. My internet is unstable. But so I'm going to try to share my screen if possible to do the ARPA presentation. But I also wanted to let you all know about the ARPA Program Manager position. Part of what we would like to do with the ARPA Funds is it is a lot of money to manage. And we would like to bring on a staff person in order to manage that project. I can share with you all the job description, the position, position description that we've come up with. Let me just.
And if it's tough for you, if you want to email it to me.
Yeah, sure. I can, well, no, it's, it just wouldn't let me do it. It says host disabled participants, screen sharing.
Ms. Jones, could you help out on that, please?
It's, it's the screen, the share screen is open.
Okay. I'm, I'm having some trouble doing it then.
It's not open. I'm sorry. City Manager, Councilwoman Jones and Council President, I, I just clicked share screen right now and it just pops up host disabled participant, screen sharing.
I'm looking at allow particip, under the security section. And if you check off screen share, it is available. Let me see.
No, it's available. It's available now.
All right.
Thank you.
So this is the position description for the project manager. It would be a full-time position, 40 hours per week. The salary range is $56,000 to $65,000 a year. We did look at other jurisdictions that are hiring other project managers to manage their ARPA funds. And this was the average of what other jurisdictions are looking at. We looked at Bladensburg, we looked at Hyattville, we looked at of course, Cod City, because that's where I came from. We also looked at other jurisdictions. We talked with jurisdictions that are doing it in-house. They did not have the, as much money as we have. And so they were also looking to bring on just a grants manager to do the work and if they were doing it in-house. So all this funding can be paid for by the ARPA Funds for the ARPA Project Manager. I mean, it wouldn't be any funding out of the general fund. It would be out of the ARPA Funds itself. So I just wanted to get some feedback from you all on that. And then I'll share with you the update on the ARPA Funds itself through the PowerPoint presentation that I have. But right now, just take any quick questions that you have about the concept of having an ARPA Program Manager. But right now, just take any quick questions that you have about the concept of having an ARPA Program Manager.
It's President.
Councilman Jones had her head up first.
With the project manager, I think it was in the city of Laurel, they were willing to share their project manager with us. That they only, we probably only needed them, they only needed them two days a week and we could get them three or they get them three and we get them two. That there's, you can share project managers. And then there's a list, from what I understand, of project managers that are that are okayed by the, the ARPA funds to use. Is there, I'm not sure, but I heard that there was a list of project managers that do this, that they would recommend that we could use that was familiar with the project, I mean, the program?
I've heard that, but I certainly can look into that. And you said which, which jurisdiction said that we could share their, their manager with them?
Laurel, Maryland.
Laurel, okay. I did, I did see some, some correspondence from the previous city manager with Landover Hills. And with Mr. David Deusch, who was at the time, I think, the acting city manager for Laurel. But I can look into that.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, I just wanna know what projects they're gonna manage, cause I haven't seen a project yet put out there for the ARPA funds. I mean, what, I mean, we're, what, we have to submit something by April? I mean, when are we gonna move forward, even decide what we're gonna do with the month?
Right. And that was some part of what I wanted to discuss with you all with the ARPA presentation this afternoon, this evening. So if you let me just go into the presentation, then I'll take your questions.
Okay.
I apologize, the screen is taking up some of my stuff. So as you all will remember, the ARP funds are, can be used originally under the interim final rule in four eligible use categories, public health and expenditures. If there were any, and that's typically if you had a health department, or if you had a hospital, or if you had some other health facility in your jurisdiction, and also to address negative economic impacts. So that would be like if you were giving out grants to local governments, excuse me, grants to local businesses. If you were giving out funds to individuals who could show that they had disproportionate effect from COVID, whether through job loss or anything like that. Second is to replace public sector revenue, and that's for cities and towns that had lost revenue because, say, there was something like the Gold Room was shut down and you weren't able to recruit that revenue because of COVID, or you had a utility and people didn't pay their utility bills. So that's, that lost public sector revenue, investing in water sewer and broadband infrastructure, and then providing premium pay for essential workers. The final rule came out in January, and it's different from the interim final rule across several categories. It's more flexible and it's more simplistic, but it is different. Now, the biggest difference with the final rule, which you have to decide if you wanna go with the final rule or the interim final rule be, between January sixth and April first. The biggest changes is to the revenue loss provision and eligible capital expenditures for, if you want to use capital expenditures like water, sewer, broadband, and if you want to hire any staff for public sector staff. Compliance requirements remain unchanged under the final rule, and you do have to have a robust compliance requirement. And I would say that that's the majority of what the program manager would be doing, is that compliance part of it, because you do have to have the single audit because of the amount of money that you're receiving. But the biggest change about ARPA is to the revenue loss. Previously, under the interim final rule, you had to calculate how much you thought you lost in revenue due to COVID. With the final rule, it allows you to make a one-time election of a standard allowance revenue loss up to ten million dollars to spend on government services through the period of performance under the lost revenue eligibility category. And what that means is, is that for a jurisdiction our size, with our money that we receive, the one, the four point two million dollars, excuse me, you can use all of that funds to replace government services as opposed to having to fit it into one of those four categories. Your allocations are not impacted by the standard allowance. If you receive less than ten million, you can just simply choose to imply the whole entire allocation to the provision of government services. If you're choosing this option, there's no need to calculate the revenue loss, and you can apply the funds for the provision of government services immediately. Some of the examples include construction of schools, hospital, road building and maintenance, health services, general government administration, adding staff if you wanted to, if you wanted to take that on, or bringing it back to pre-pandemic levels. Environmental remediation, things like water and sewer are still included in there. Provision of police, fire, and other pivot safety services, including the purchase of fire trucks and police vehicles. That was something that you couldn't do previously unless you were using those lost revenue dollars. But this gives you more flexibility in using more of the funds towards the services. Under the final rule, you can also use it for non-federal matches. If we were to participate in any of the programs like the Hazard Mitigation Block Grant or the BRIC program, Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities. I know that we don't typically apply for community developed block grants, so it couldn't be used for that. But it could be used for other federal programs that we might choose to participate in. Again, compliance, you have to retain a robust compliance program throughout the program, including the monitoring, if you were doing any sub-receipients. Saying you wanted to give funding to a nonprofit that would then give money to the community, that would be a sub-receipient monitoring. And then, of course, you have to do the single audit with the IRS, with Treasury. So now I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman Harry?
So when are we gonna sit down and look at projects that need to be done in the city of Glen Arden?
So I think that previously, what I've heard from your other meetings is that you all have some projects in mind. And I think what happens is, is when you decide if you want to go with that one-time allowance, or if you still want to calculate the lost revenue, then that will give you more guidance as to what you can spend your money on. I did talk with the treasurer, I believe he's on the line as well, about the calculation that we were going to do. That calculation is probably not gonna come up to the four point two million dollars that we are receiving. So it would be a very limited pool of money that we would be able to draw from to do things that are outside of the scope of those four categories. What I would welcome is a wish list from each council member as to what your projects are. We have put together a survey to go out to the public by putting it online and also sending it out by direct mail to the citizens, so they can respond back directly to us as to what they would like. And if you all are in agreement, we can certainly go ahead and put that out in the next week. We already have it ready and launched, to launch. So I'm just waiting for instructions from you all as to what you all would like to spend the funding on.
Mr. President, ma'am.
Yes, Councilman.
So, I mean, it seems like the simplest thing would be the one-time, one-time option? Which gives you more flexibility?
Yes.
On it. So, I mean, we needed, I mean, that should be a decision that we should make. Okay, let's just do that. And then we can roll in the projects into whatever we need to do as we get them, as they come in. I just think, you know, I mean, right now, we're just, don't we have to have something to somebody by April? Or is that no longer true?
No, it's still true. You still do have to send by April, the, I believe it's April the first. You have to send out, or the end of April, I can't exactly remember, but it is April, exactly what you spent your funding on and how you spend, how you expect to spend your funds.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, we need to, we need to get the ball moving, cause I mean, we're just sitting here and, you know, nothing's getting done. I don't want us to lose this money.
Right. And what I would suggest is, I would strongly suggest the survey, they have been successful in other jurisdictions. And also having some online forums have also been successful. And I would be more than happy to help facilitate those with folks to listen in. Or if we wanted to dedicate part of the meetings to, you know, citizens to hear what they have to say. Or you could put out a blanket request for a request for funding from individuals, whether they be nonprofit organizations or small businesses, to see what sort of things they would like to see in the community.
I mean, I think the forums and getting information from the citizens is very important. I think we need to do that now, sooner than later. So that we can at least say we reached out to them to give them, cause a lot of them don't know what's going on. That's not. A lot of them don't know what's going on. They don't know anything about ARPA funds, only the people that's online or may see us on these Zoom meetings. Other than that, you know, you got a lot of people that don't know what it's, what it's about. And I think we need to inform them, get them up to speed so that they can be informed and give us suggestions on what they like to see. I mean, I know some of the things I like to see, but I can't speak for everybody. So.
The survey would be done like a newsletter that we would send out by every door direct. And it would have a brief overview of what the ARPA funds are and how they can be used. And then it would have a list of sort of multiple choice of, of areas that people could decide that they would like to see money. They could rate it from, you know, very important to not important. And then it would also have an open part where they could just write in anything that they would want to.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I'll go Councilman Hairston, and then I'll come to you, Ms. Gill.
Um, I agree with reaching out to the citizens and saying what they want, but I know you had said, Ms. Barber, you said you wanted us to send in a wish list. I know we were accessing the wish list before, and I know I sent them once. I just wanted to know if you still had those emails or do you need us to resend it?
Yeah, if you send it to the previous city manager, I don't have access to his email, so you would need to resend it to me.
Or did we send it to you there? I mean, you know, Councilman Curtis, I apologize.
Yeah, most fun. I think so. And I could search the email, cause it would have been to all of us. So I could search my email, Ms. Barber, and send it to you. Madam Clerk, could you also search, see if you can find it? And if you can't find it for it, to Ms. Barber, please. Council McGill.
Thank you, Council President. Just going off of what you just discussed with Councilman Hairston. I'm pretty sure, separate from the wish list, we also during the meeting, so it would, it would require us to go check online for past meeting notes, I mean, recordings, excuse me, where we did briefly discuss ARPA. We had a meeting in particular where we ran down a list. I know I ran down a gamut, you know. So I can try to look back, City Manager Barber, to see my notes, which meeting it was. But off the top of my head, I know it's a recording, so if that will help alleviate some time, I can just go ahead and do that. I can't promise that I'll do it tonight or by tomorrow, but for sure, before we meet again, I should have that to you. The next, so the question that I was going to pose was, City Manager Barber, you mentioned the survey. And I think it's very important for us to do something like that, so I applaud your efforts or your thought in making that effort be a reality. My question is more, how would you get the feedback back to you? You know, if they're filling it out, do they place it? Is there going to be stamps? I just didn't know.
Right. So actually, this would require a little bit of work on the part of the resident. We could do it, if we sent it out every door direct. They would be required to actually bring it to the city hall and put it in a lockbox. We would have a lockbox out by the police department or where the administrative door is for people to put that in. The lockbox costs like maybe seventy dollars from Home Depot. And we would check that every day for submissions, and then we would empty it out every day. And then it would have a lock on it and all that kind of thing. So that would require some work on their part. But we are also gonna put it online so that you can do it through Google Forms. And they can submit it online through a Google Form.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I didn't know if there was going to be a number that they can call or what. So that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Hairston?
What you're saying, what you're saying that the residents would come up and put the information in a drop box, I just wanted to know, did you guys come up with a deadline for that? Cause it would need, it would need a closeout time, right? You would have to look through all of that, right? It's a lot to look through.
Right. And I would say, you know, we would give it a good month. So give it a good month. So at the middle of, you know, the middle of March.
Okay. Would you specify that to them so they know it?
Yes, it would be on the actual survey.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, why can't we use self-addressed returned envelopes?
Well, you can. It's not a problem to do that, but it's kinda hard to put it in the newsletter form and send it out every door direct. What we would have to actually do is we would have to actually stuff the newsletter into an envelope and then include the self-addressed stamped envelope. So that would require some pretty labor-intensive work on our part.
Now, can we use the ARPA funds for that?
You could.
So can we get a direct mail company to do it?
I would say.
Okay, I mean, it's four million dollars. I mean, I think it's easier to do that and get them to mail it, drop it in the mail and get it back to us then. Y'all sitting there stuffing and folding. I mean, if we get a direct mail company can do it, no problem at all. I think, I think it's something we can look at. I think we'll get back more responses than having them come up there, dropping it in the drop box, honestly. I think we need to look into that. All right, thank you.
Yeah, a question. So in all likelihood, we will not spend any money by the first reporting period, correct?
Well, I know that you all had done some work with the council clerk about your dais being re-retrofitted. And I think that work probably could be done, if you also desire, by the beginning of April or by at least the middle of April. And also, if you, kind of the low-hanging fruit that a lot of jurisdictions are looking at is providing assistance to households. And they're either doing that by providing direct assistance to every single household in the form of a check, or they are providing direct assistance to the selection of bills that were unpaid, or it's like a grant for a household grant for individuals who are having financial difficulty during COVID. And what they do is they actually submit their bills that they haven't paid, and we pay the bills on behalf of them under a set of criteria that we evaluate their request against. So that's really some of the low-hanging fruit. And then also giving grants to businesses that can show that they were disproportionately affected by COVID and are still suffering through. and are still suffering through COVID through lost revenue. It's some of the low-hanging fruit.
So, but, when we talk, so, but still, even with that, that, that wouldn't happen by March thirty first. Even low-hanging fruit, you'll still have to establish a program. Criteria, uh, have somebody manage that, which would likely have to be, um, the, uh, manager that you just proposed. So, yeah, I say that, and I don't think what was funny, if we, you know, don't spend anything, um, uh, by March. But I just want us to be, ha, have that clear, that in all likelihood, you know, we will be reporting zero dollars by March thirty first. But, Council McGill.
So, Council President, I, I, I sort of agree with you in regards to the timing. But, you know, I, I try to be, um, I try to be a solutions-oriented person, so, or I should say a half-glass-full person. But I do realistically think that the timing, I, I'm not sure if by April first we'll be able to do that. Um, what's being proposed by, um, Ms. Barber. But, I will say that we don't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel here because what City Manager Barber just mentioned, I know, um, the City of College Park has been doing it. And it seems to be somewhat successful. So, um, if it's a matter of reaching out to our, um, respective municipal colleagues and seeing if they can just, you know, tell us real quickly what worked, what didn't work, or how they've done it. Maybe that can expedite some of the learning curves that we may have in trying to do it on our own right now as far. And I'm specifically speaking to the two, um, examples that City Manager Barber just mentioned in regards to business and to individuals who face hardship due to COVID, as far as the criterias and the grant and all that stuff. So, just wanted to, um, put that out there.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Councilman Gill. Uh, and at, at least, I mean, yeah, I think it's a great point, uh, at least to, do we have the capacity? You know, so, for example, when we get these responses back from citizens or to connect with other municipalities and start to build that, do we currently have the capacity, staffing capacity, uh, to, uh, focus on those, uh, projects?
I think we do. I don't think that, um, it's those two things in particular. If we follow the, um, lead of Councilwoman Gill's recommendation, if we reach out to our counterparts to see what has worked, what hasn't worked, and use those best practices that we could get something, um, in the works very soon. And, um, as far as capacity, I think.
Is it me or? Okay, all right. Well, we'll wait for her to come back. Mayor Cross.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure that we know that by April first, we just have to at least have a plan. So, we don't have to have started work. We just need to have a plan. And, uh, right now, we have at least three proposed, um, plan items. Uh, what we really do need, uh, from the council is, um, you know, permission to move forward with the project manager or the project director that will actually help us account for how these funds are going to be spent. So, that's really the first priority, uh, for the administration is to get that, um, job, uh, duty description, you know, approved by the council, so that we can actually create the position who will actually be, uh, keeping track and doing the reporting on these funds. Uh, I don't see that there is a problem with the capacity of the administration to execute. Uh, but just so that, you know, we are clear, we don't have to have started a project by the first of April, but we do need to have a plan in place.
And for clarity, back to what Councilman Herring was saying. Um, the election of the government services. If we elect that, then we develop a plan. Uh, Councilman Herring, I don't want to confuse what you were saying. But was, was that the case?
Yeah, just select the option, every one, which is the more flexible one, which is the one-time, you know, option and just, um, saving them to use all the funds for government services. Um, then we could just put, I mean, like the mayor said, you know, we can just, we just need a plan in place. We don't even have that, though, at this point, but, um.
And, and to that point, Councilman Herring, um, City Manager Barber and I actually had that discussion today about what would be the better option. I agree with you, sir, that that would be the better option. And as we look at, you know, uh, what our lost revenue is, that option actually perfor, affords the most flexibility for the city overall to do the most good. And I do, I acknowledge that we have had a large sum of citizens who have been calling about assistance. I even had one call just this morning about what the cities could do, uh, as we're looking at. And then this is in my mayoral report, you know, for folks that took the, um, uh, buyout or the option to extend payments. Those payments are now coming due, uh, and so, you know, that could be something that we could use to help people, uh, who, you know, lost their jobs or for whatever, uh, didn't have the funds to pay at the time during COVID, and now they're in trouble.
Thank you. I want to save a question. I don't know if Ms. Barber was able to join the call again. Ms. Barber, are you on?
I'm back on, I apologize, yes.
Okay, any other questions as to, um, the ARPA pla, the ARPA Fund Plan? And the City, uh, Project Manager, uh, Councilman Jones?
Um, Mayor Cross mentioned, uh, payments. You talking about mortgage payments or, uh, the utility payments?
Well, like your utility payments, um, you know, gas and energy, we can take care of those things. Um, you know, even when it comes down to, like, um, w- when they took the, you know, extended payments for, um, you know, paying even their, um, their taxes and things like that. We can even do that. Uh, well, there's a lot of flexibility as far as what we can do for our citizens that are in need. That's what I'm trying to say.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Barber, uh, is that off of your report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stewart. Are you online?
Hello, yes, I am online. Um, I'd like to give you my input on the ARPA funds before we go on. Um, I am thinking of by March, because this report should go in by the, it should go in by April thirtieth, but it's reporting on, um, our activities through March thirty first. I, I definitely wanted to use the revenue loss, um, with regard to the Gold Room as one of the contributors to that report. So, I will keep that in mind so that at least we have something to show up by that time. So, that I have actually started to work on. And, um, i- it's not much as I, as, um, co, uh, as, um, City Manager, um, Barber suggested. Um, but I think we should at least have that on a report by April thirtieth.
Thank you.
So, then I'll move into the report for the Treasurers. This report is for December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And these are the revenues, the revenues for the period ending December thirty first was five million four forty six thousand.
One second. Ms. Jones, can you see my screen? Is it showing the report?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so the total revenues for the period ending December thirty first uh, was five million four hundred and forty-six thousand three oh seven. Um, total expenses was two million and seventy-seven thousand four twelve. Um, leaving us with a excess of revenue over expenses of three million three sixty-eight eight ninety-five. Uh, as a city, as I've said in other time, as a city moved into its, um, second quarter, or the end of the second quarter, um, will property tax continue to come in? As in prior years, the, the amounts that come in of the earlier months are a lot more than what comes in, in the prior months. So, the earlier months will show higher amounts. In a subsequent review, we saw that in December twenty twenty, um, there was approximately eight hundred and thirty-three thousand received, which is a good point. There was a slow point in December where we only received thirty-six thousand, I believe. Um, but at December, we really got in eight hundred thousand more, we got in eight hundred thirty-three thousand. In December, the collections for general funds was three million and fifteen thousand two forty-nine. Of this, total local taxes were two million five sixty thousand five oh one. License and permits remain at thirty-two thousand one ninety-one. Uh, state grant also at seventy-three thousand nine thirty-six. Um, in previous meetings, uh, we discussed the amount that came in as real property tax and that portions of it really was, or should be, um, dedicated to street lights and special assessments. So, I had moved some of that amount into that area. And we are at halfway through the fiscal period. So, I had, uh, accrued an amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight seventy-five specifically for, um, service charges for those areas. Other finance services were seventy-six thousand seven forty-six. Given all of those monies that was, uh, that I have discussed, the cash update is saying that the city is in a good position to pay for its debt if any should come, as they come about. Or cash balance as of January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. And if you notice on the report, I had December twenty-eighth. I want to apologize for that. It's really for January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. The main operating account had nine million eight hundred and six thousand two ten. Forebearance account had seven thousand and seventy-eight. Gold Room account had one hundred and ten thousand five forty-three. Block Grant had four thousand one ninety-eight. And the Cable PEG Grant account had two hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight ninety-eight. And I want to continue to speak about the, well, I'll continue to talk about the, the SunTrust Bank loan because we have satisfied that in December, and we have gotten all the documents with regard to transferring that vehicle back to, or those vehicles to the city. I have actually passed those documents to come, um, City Manager Barber, and she will be acting on them to ensure that we get the deeds and the documents for those vehicles. The audit, um, uh, on January twenty-fourth, we actually received the draft for the audit. This audit is for year twenty twenty-one. I am actually in the process of reviewing those accounts. They look good so far. Um, there's just a few things, window dressings, you could call them, that I need to get through with the auditors about. And, um, we should be able to get that done by the latest Wednesday. The, um, the auditors said that they would be ready to speak with the, um, the council as soon as, um, we are ready. So, after Wednesday, I would like to know when would be the best time for the auditors to meet and discuss the audit with the council. I have already, um, requested some time from the Department of Legislation, Legislative Service for the State of Maryland to extend the time that we need to, um, to submit the audit. Um, we have now until February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two to get the audit in. And that is a quick, um, rundown of our treasurer's report. Thank you. Anyone answer the questions? I'm open for your answers, for, for your questions. And anything I cannot answer right now, I'll be sure to get it to you as quick as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stewart. Acting Chief Jackson?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. I, uh, you have a copy of the chief's report. Uh, you have any questions, feel free to ask me. Pretty lengthy. And, uh,
I can't hear you, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I said, if you have a copy of, feel free to ask me any question. You're lengthy.
I mean, we, we don't need a, uh, to go back and what happened in January or, or December. Uh, this is an overall high level. But, uh, uh, if there are no questions about a council, uh, we can move on. Councilman Jones?
I am still waiting for the, uh, documentation on the twenty-four hour, uh, tobacco stores, uh, where it was told s, to somebody in the city that they were allowed to be open for twenty-four hours. Like I've stated before, um, when, um, Acting Chief O'Donnell was with us, uh, he was working diligently in trying to, uh, not have those stores open for twenty-four hours, only until midnight. Uh, but someone has said that there is some documentation saying that they can be open until, uh, twenty-four hours. I have not seen that yet. I'm still waiting for that information. Also, the, um, A-one liquors, we received a letter. I hope that that letter was sent to you to let you all know that you still have to provide security for A-one liquors um, between the hours of eleven PM and twelve midnight at their closing. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And if, preference to the twenty-four hour tobacco stores, have to, uh, speak with Code Enforcement, uh, jury Thomas about that. He would have that information. He told me, um, that, uh, I think the former city manager, Mr. Ken Jones, and the chief has signed off on that for them to be open twenty-four hours. It's in, it's in their contract, their license.
Uh, well, I'd like to see the documentation for that, because citizens are asking.
Okay, I'll have.
Be able to give them information that's, um, um, that's documented to say that, um, those stores can be open.
I'll have him to send that to you. I'll speak to him tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Jackson? Uh, next on the agenda is topics of discussion. And I know that, uh, we are at eight-thirty now. Mayor Cross, I will definitely give you time at the, the next meeting for your mayor report, so citizens can ask you questions. Uh, but in the sake of time, we'll continue to push that to next week. And then we could talk offline about how we could format, you know, the work sessions and the mayor. You said it wasn't a town hall, it was, um, however you put it, but we could talk offline and see what's the best structure for that and go from there. Mayor Cross?
Yes, so just for the mayoral town halls and the mayoral forums, they're just to obtain information from the citizens is what they would like to see to help us drive a better development across the administration and support of the citizens. As it pertains to legislation and what your meeting is, Council President, we need to make those comments here for you and the council to hear them. Because many of the reportings, if you will, from the mayoral side of the house does have need for, you know, resolutions, need for decisions to be made. They're not to be at that level of the mayoral town hall because it doesn't bear the weight of the executive city council meeting. So in this reporting respectfully, it does need to stay in the Monday. And and we'll just keep it at high level. But for example, talking about, well, the discussion that we had on the ARPA funds. And I will send you all the congressional report, which gives us the eligibility use of funds, which ties to Councilwoman Jones inquiry regarding to, you know, mortgage payments, delinquencies, defaults, foreclosures, loss of utilities, home energy, et cetera. So the mayor report actually brings you some value and worth for decision making. If it comes out of this meeting, then it doesn't have the decisions. And at which case, then we're going to lose something in communication.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. So we do actually have it twice. We have it at the working session and we have it at the regular session. So yeah, I thought your forum was something else, but either way, you still have the opportunity to to present the mayor's report. So clearly hear what you're saying. And for the sake of time, since you give a report this meeting and give the same report next meeting, we're just going to keep your report at the next meeting and then the council and citizens will be able to ask and ask you some questions.
Mayor, just on that, I mean, okay, I mean, I was hoping that we could actually allow the mayor to speak at the work session so we can get all our questions out of the way. So that we won't have to drag out the regular meeting on Monday with questions from both us and the citizens. It seems like this is the opportunity where if we want to have any in-depth questions or it gets a little bit, we need her to drill down a little bit more on some of our answers instead of giving us a high-low, high-level approach on a time restraint that, you know, the work session would be more beneficial to us as council members if we have any pertinent questions that we need to ask the mayor of her report or any other issue that we may have with her in the city governance, you know. So I mean, that's the way I I would see it working. Because again, on Monday, we start asking questions and the citizens start asking questions, we're going to have a meeting that probably should only be thirty to forty-five minutes or hour, go into two hours, two and a half hours. So I mean, that's just my feeling. That's just a discussion that we can have at a later day, but I just think that this is the opportunity for us as council members to ask whatever questions we need to ask, get them out of the way. And if we have additional questions that's not on her report, ask those and move on.
So I agree. And earlier I did ask if the council had any questions related to the mayor's report because we all had it. And I believe we all read it before this meeting. And the urban edge properties were last minute at. So to save time, I did ask if the council had any questions and the council didn't have any questions. So if the council does have questions now, I mean, feel free to ask. And again, this is me assuming that the council members have, we we've had these reports for a week that we've got the reports and have the questions for them. But if, you know, council wants to, you know, make this meet a little bit longer, then, you know, I I full respect every council member to ask questions of the mayor. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I will continue to forward. If there's an objection, let me know. Okay. Talks of discussion, Ms. Jones, elevator? Well, not your elevator, but the elevator.
We had that discussion before. I don't know how this got on the topics of discussion for me. The last, the meeting before, I told you all that after doing the research on the elevator, there was no monies. That's something that if they, if the city, if the council decides that they want an elevator, they're going to have to put the monies in the budget because that grant money is, the state has said that grant money has been a return, whatever was left out of the grant that they issued has been returned back to the state. And I do have documentation of that. So I don't know how this got back on the topics of discussion because we had this discussion prior.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilman Jones. We'll move on to the marquee.
Yeah, and I added that as a topic of discussion. I just, I'm ready for the marquee to go back under the council clerk where it was originally placed. You know, as again, as I said last time, we, the council actually purchased a marquee for announcing their meetings. And I think it needs to go back under the council clerk as it originally was. The reason why I was taken from under the council clerk was because the council big position was vacant, came vacant. And so we had to move it up front to keep it, to keep messages flowing and communication flowing to the citizens. So I'm just ready for that to be done. So we can move forward with that. I'm gonna tell you honestly, I still cannot read the marquee. It's too much on there. It's just not, it's not, yeah, it's just too much on it. It's too much going on. The the letters, the writing is small and everything else. And like I said, the council clerk has always maintained the marquee. So that's my issue on that.
Mayor Cross, one can be switched over?
It can be switched over as soon as you would like. But I I guess what I would have as a question for Councilman Herring is, could you send us a an idea of what, you know, you would like to see as far as the marquee? Because we've gotten a lot of compliments from the citizens about the professional quality of the marquee and how it looks and, you know, being an informative tool. So I guess we, you know, for, we are paying a web media specialist, which, you know, she's been doing a fantastic job, I think, capturing all of the activities that are happening across the city. So I mean, if you can just, if you would, provide us an assessment of what you would like to see. Because as of right now, I mean, moving it back from moving it from the administration into the to the city council clerk implies that something's not getting done, but everything's getting done. But if if it is a clarity issue, then provide us a view or vision, if you will, input as to what you would like it to 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 look like. We've been matching this against the ADA complacency. You know, I gave you all the the city council, the report, as well as the citizen that inquired before. So I think that's where we're at. Just show us what you don't like and what you expect. Because one of the the concerns we met was the marquee could do more than just, you know, one color. It could do pictures and all of that. And that's what she's been trying to do is match. I believe it was your your request, Councilman Herring, to make the marquee more more communicative to the citizens and use its full potential.
Um, Mayor, I just want to be able to read it. I can't, I cannot read that marquee. I'm sorry, I just cannot. It's too much. The letters are too small. The fonts are not the right size for what for where they should be for that type of marquee. Like I said, there's certain that certain fonts that are needed for a marquee on a highway where people are driving forty miles an hour, people coming from the opposite side of the street. That's not, that's not doing it. I mean, it's just not, you cannot read anything on it. The lettering is just too small. And I know I'm not colorblind. And, you know, I wait, I got, and I had my glasses on, so I I can't read it. I can't, I mean, and I, and if I know if I can't read it, I know there's some of these scenes that definitely, and that's what I'm getting complaints from. The scenes who say they can't read it. They don't know what's going on. I shouldn't have to see, shouldn't I have to call me up and say, okay, what time is the meeting? Where can I find the meeting? If all of that is on the website, I mean, on a marquee, then I get it. They can't see it. They cannot read it. They cannot follow it. You know, I mean, even with your movie thing, I I mean, I I didn't even know what I, I couldn't even read that. I didn't even know what the movie was, when it was or anything. I went to the website and finally figured out when it was. Other than that, couldn't read that, couldn't see it. You know, and if you stand across the street, I, and I challenge, well, you you'll know what it is because you probably already know what you're putting up there. But I challenge anybody to go across there to that seven oh four store and try to read that marquee. To see if you can read and you can read everything on there. Can't be done. And I know if you're driving, you're not going to see it. So, I mean, my thing is this, though, the responsibility is was under the council. So, I mean, and my thing is, and it's just a matter of getting a hookup in the council's office. You didn't got to take it from up front. I mean, we had two hookups. We had one up front and one in the council's office. So when a clerk wasn't there, then somebody up front could could do it. So, I mean, it isn't a matter of taking it from up there. It's a matter of adding it to the council's office and not allowing the council to control it. It's for our messages, it's for our meetings, you know. Especially since there's an issue with us complying with the Open Meetings Act, I think in your, in your, in your mayor's report, you're talking about the 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 sandwich boards and complying with the Open Meetings Act and all this other stuff. That's what that's for. That's what that marquee is for, complying with the Open Meetings Act. So they need, people need to be able to read and know when we have in our meetings. And, you know, you have all of this other stuff in front of it. And the stuff's not coming down. I mean, it just can't be read. That's my whole thing with that marquee. So I just want to know, when are we going to get, when are we going to call the company, ask them to come out and hook the hook, do the hookup into the council clerk's office and get her the training that she need? That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Cross, quickly.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear and I understand, Councilman Herring, what your recommendation is that we put an additional link into the the council clerk. And the council clerk does all the advertisement for the city council on the marquee. And then the administration, you know, and and other announcements continue to be managed then by Ms. Ward on behalf of the administration.
No, the council clerk will manage the, will manage the marquee like the council clerk did before. She managed all the, all the messages, everything. She maintained it. She made sure that everything went up on time. She took down. She made sure that old stuff didn't sit up there. She did all of that. I mean, I I think Ms. Ward has enough on her plate being a social media manager with everything that she's doing. You know, I mean, the marquee, but marquee was not a part of it in her, in her job description. I don't ever remember the marquee being part of her, her job description. You know, I mean, that has always been under the council. And it was supposed to come back under the council once we got a clerk on board. Now that we have a clerk on board, I think it's something that needs to be brought back under the council, especially since we still don't have the new mark. We don't even have a new, is the new website up and running yet? And either, either, I mean, anyway, is that even up and running?
Thank you for that.
Is the new, is the new website up and running?
So the new website is is ready to be launched. We're waiting for the approval from the city council. December reporting, we asked for, you know, the review from the city council as to, you know, the the website. I will say that the actions taken while Councilwoman Eason was running the website, this is what we have inherited. And so now at this point, the way the website is to make changes would cost more money for the administration as well as, you know, for the city to change, you know, even the font. Because one of my concerns is when you do a dropdown menu, all the font is one color, it's all white. So I ask if we can do the major bullet points in like a bolder print and maybe a different color than the actual sub-bullet points that are listed in the dropdown menu. And what came back from the company was that, you know, that would be an additional cost based on, you know, they had already received from, you know, previous planning team, the you know, the scope of design. So essentially, what we would fall into is scope creep and additionally would cost us. But, I mean, we're just waiting for the council's approval and this website can go hot. It can go hot tomorrow.
I mean, it's hot, all right, because I saw it and it ain't, it ain't, I mean, I I don't think it's that great. I don't think it's what we were promised when we originally signed on. What they showed us is not what we is not what we're getting. I mean, it looks almost exactly like what we already have to me. Everything. I'm, I'm, and I'm very surprised that it looks the way it looks when we spent as much money and they spent as much time. Something that should have been done in six months has been two years in the making and we coming back with the, with the same thing we had before. So, I mean, like I said, I mean, I don't know. All right.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to make sure I'm understanding Councilman Herring's comment. I could summarize Councilman Herring regarding the marquee. Are you saying essentially that the marquee is not for communicating administrative events? And that the marquee is solely to be used to communicate council information?
When we, when we originally purchased that marquee, we originally purchased it for announcing council meetings. And we added, and we started advertising other events that were going on also. But originally, that's what we got it for. We spent a lot of time, I think, me, Ms. Jones, Ms. Ferguson, Ms. Eason, the last council looking over marquees, getting it right, getting everything right for that. You know, and that's what we spent that money on to 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 specifically for that, you know. Now, other stuff can be advertised, but the main function of that marquee was to advertise city meetings.
Okay.
Main function of the marquee.
And additional events that were eventually added on, were those managed through the council clerk?
Everything was managed through the council clerk.
Okay.
Because she kept a schedule. Because one thing we wanted to make sure is that our meetings did not get lost on that marquee. We didn't want forty events and then hours roll out at the last minute. We want to make sure our meetings were up there and that old stuff didn't sit there and old stuff didn't, didn't populate the marquee to the point where, you know, it takes forty minutes before you get back to the next message.
Right, right, right. No, I I'm thank you for that clarification. And the other, I just wanted to echo the comments around the the website. I know the council clerk is waiting on some comments from me as we were going back and forth last week. The website is very difficult to review in terms of like what the expectation was, having been on the website committee. I think there to Councilman Herring's point, there's a big disconnect from what was anticipated versus what is there now. And I, you know, I I don't, I think it's just a matter of how we went about it. And that if this is typical, when you have when you're releasing software or the types of things like that, if you go through the whole process without seeing a prototype of what you're expecting to see based upon your specifications before it's released, and this is typically what happens. So I think we definitely need to keep that in mind as we, you know, continue to work with this vendor or even looking at other vendors, that the likelihood of you just kind of being able to speak in abstract about your requirements and go through months of that as we do on the website committee and then actually get what you were expecting to get is always low. And, you know, then you end up with scope creep, you end up with additional costs. So I think we definitely need to be mindful of that. With that said, I do think we need to accept the fact that that's what has happened. The website that we have now is essentially the same as what we have. And I def, I definitely think that what we need to do is just eat that loss and move forward with what we want to have. And kind of, you know, just, just start from scratch and really kind of focus on different sprints to get us to where we need to be. So we might have to come out with several versions of the website. But I think initially, let's go through and see what are our our basic requirements to make sure that it's distinct from what we have now. And then kind of move forward from there. That would be my recommendation because it's really, it's a lot of comments. That's it, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Cross, very briefly.
I thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. And indeed, we really should have did this website in sprints, which would have given us little bite-sized chunks to evaluate. So we look at, you know, the government piece, then we look at, you know, the administrative piece, which includes public works, police department, so that we could codify this. When you, when we When you, when we uh saw this back in April, we had a different vision of what this would look like. We even talked to dropdown menus, which expanded as you clicked on what you wanted to see, not this whole book when you first open it. So I acknowledge everyone's concern and note that um I too am a- am concerned, having seen the prototype that we hope to have seen, uh, now seeing the fruition of, you know, all those labors. So, uh, we do need to um move forward and at least allow it to deliver. Uh, this would be phase one. Uh, and then we would have phase two, which we would take, you know, each section and modify it appropriately. And we can even consider a different vendor once it's delivered.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. MML?
Yeah, I I added that also. And and just to go back to the website, um, it really is disheartening to hear that all this time went into that website and this is all we got, because I thought that's exactly what Councilwoman Fareed said. That's what I thought was being done, you know, taking it bit by bit. But obviously, you know, I don't, I don't know, because I wasn't on the committee, so. In any way, MML, um, I just wanted to uh mention MML and um just want to make sure that there's enough on the credit card, or do we even have a credit card to reserve the spots for council members that are going and their registrations? Um, has that been looked into? Because if you always run into that issue of the credit card either need either be up to the limit or over the limit and they can't do it and can't book rooms or whatever. Um, I just want to make sure that's clear. Also, um, I just want to make sure also that we know that um, the clerk also should be ten- attending this MML, because I want to just make sure that one thing, Victoria, um, as a new clerk, who's a numinous clerk, I think there's a lot of classes at MML that she needs to take advantage of, because she needs to work toward her certification. Um, I know the previous clerk got a lot of her classes at MML um, um, for certification. So I just want to make sure that everything is covered when it comes down to that credit card and making sure everybody's registered, because, I mean, we've have gone to these conferences and people had to come out their pocket with money. So I just want to make sure that that's um, that that's taken care of and that the card is a, is gonna be available for anybody that wants to go for their registration in the hotels, so. That's it on that.
Ms. Barber, I saw that you unmuted yourself, uh, the chat.
Right, so the credit card is not here yet. Um, we did hear from SunTrust last week that it was sent in the mail, so we anticipate receiving it anytime now. Um, but it is not here yet. So, um, if anyone were to make a reservation, um, check would have to be sent.
Okay, so is, I know some council members have, so are they sending a check? So are they using a credit card?
Not sure. I I haven't seen any, um, I don't see the checks, but I haven't seen any POs except for mine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and I put mine on my personal credit card and sent it.
Right, okay. And that shouldn't even, that shouldn't even be.
Ca- Council, Councilman Herring, I have seen yours and uh Council uh Harrison. Those only two, uh, as it relate to um credit limit, is the credit limit, Ms. Barber, enough to, is it, you know, enough to handle business needs or city needs?
It should be, yes, sir.
And just one more, Ms. Holmes, uh, as it relates to the account, credit card policy, I do think that it's important to have one in place. I do believe I sent that out to the council a while ago. Uh, but uh, Ms. Barber, if you could take the lead on that before that credit card is actually uh, put into play, I would like to have a, a, I hope that we have a robust credit card policy. Uh, who could have one, you know, expenditures, uh, do's and don'ts and um all the other standard procedure, how sort of policy.
Okay.
Councilwoman Jones?
The credit card was al- always in the possession of the the um treasurer. So are are we saying now that we're not gonna, the treasurer will not be in possession of the credit card to make those purchases that needed to be, need to be made?
No, I don't think that was the uh, the communication, Ms. Barber. Well, can't hear Ms. Barber right now, but I I didn't hear that. I think it it does stick with the treasurer, but I could be, uh, Ms. uh Mayor Cross.
You you're right, Councilwoman Jones. That credit card needs to be with the treasurer. Uh, we also need to make sure that the um uh policy that we worked on last year uh goes to uh play. I mean, we actually have one, so we were just waiting for the approval from the council to launch uh, to use those credit cards. But uh definitely, you're right, Councilwoman Jones.
Okay, and then I think bef- at one point, we did receive credit cards from a credit card company. What happened to those credit cards?
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. So we have those credit cards. We were waiting for permission from uh Council President to be able to use them. And in fact, um, you know, at the time, because the treasurer was a temp hire, uh, we were asked to hold without using those credit cards until uh the treasurer came on as a full employee.
Okay, but I just want a clear understanding that those credit cards would be in the possession of the treasurer and that he will uh determine, you know, uh, be aware of the balances and what's being spent at all times.
Uh, you're correct, and and thank you for that concern, because uh we do want to make sure that our books stay balanced as well. Whatever comes off of that credit card has to be accounted for in our, um, you know, weekly finance reporting uh, to the council and the mayor. Appreciate that, ma'am.
Councilman Herring, I see that, I'm sorry, Council, Ellen, sorry, you finished? Okay, Councilman Herring, sorry about that.
So, the city manager said they waited for a credit card to come through. Now, Ms. Jones just asked about credit cards and she's, they're saying there's two in there, so what's coming through the mail now?
That's a credit card in my name.
Okay.
They, they, when they asked to um have the credit card for the city through SunTrust, it had to be in someone's name. And so my understanding was that the credit card was to be put in my name.
Okay, that's a problem, because we've never had a city manager with their name on a credit card. It's always been the treasurer.
The treasurer does have one in his, he does have one in his name, and the mayor has one in her name.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we have a problem. We would Yeah, we can, we we have a discussion on this. As you, as you said, we gotta have, we gotta have some discussion on this, because the city, we've only had credit cards in the, in the treasurer's name, and it stayed in the treasurer's office. There was no credit cards floating around like that. We we nipped that in the bud years ago. You know, because of um, you know, certain things, but I just think that that's too many credit cards out there.
Yeah, well, I think that was a miscommunication, because um, and I think Dean is on the line. He maybe can talk to the, what the bank required was, um, because I had to give my own personal information for that to happen.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, um, so given what was happening with the card that was in my possession and the fact that I was not on staff and waiting for um approval from the council to make purchases or to use a card, given that the city manager is an employee and we had, in the initial stage, applied for credit cards for the city manager as well. This card will be managed, will actually be managed by me, in the sense that I will um be requesting all documents, all receipts, everything from the city manager as she go about um making purchases. So my understanding is that, until I get on staff, which is, we wanted to get a credit card immediately, we would have gotten it some weeks ago, if it wasn't that the bank had taken so long to process the credit cards. So we are expecting a card to come in by the end of this week for the city manag- for the city manager, where I am still not a part of staff. So she would be able to do all those purchases until I get on staff.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stewart. Uh, it's just, as I stated, I think, yeah, having a robust credit card policy in place for anybody has a credit card, who can have a credit card, what they can spend it on, and even uh just a thought. Uh, yeah, no, we have a a charter review committee, but having the uh finance committee on the council that reviews the purchases of even the treasurer, uh, to make sure that he or she, well, in this case, he uh, is spending it on appropriate expenses. All that goes into the policy of the credit card. But uh, none of them are in yet, uh, council members. But does highlight the need to, yeah, just have that policy in place on what is acceptable. Uh, and, you know, what we can, you know, agree to, I guess. Councilman Herring?
Yeah, my my issue is this, really, is that these cards are being ordered and we know nothing about. These credit cards are being ordered. We got three credit cards that's been ordered. We know absolutely nothing about them until we hear about they're coming in the mail or all of a sudden, there's two credit cards in the building. That's something that we as council members need to know, because basically, using a credit card is a way to circumvent the purchasing policy if they really wanted to do it. You know, and that's why I think we need to know at all times what's going on with these credit cards and who's got them and why they order, and who's authorizing them to order them. You know, so um, I mean, I I do have a big problem with that, with these credit cards floating around like they are. We we we've only, we've only had one credit card in the building at a time, you know, um. So I'm not, I I I I'm very uncomfortable with this whole credit card thing. Because it's like everybody just throwing their name in the hat and getting the credit card.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um, I agree with um with uh Councilman Herring is saying, and I absolutely uh um, disagree with any elected official having a uh card in their name, and these can be cut up immediately.
Thank you, Councilman Ferguson. Uh, so, for a second time, we're going to move on. Mayor Cross, it, you know, feel free to email us if you have any, you know, additional thoughts on on the matter. Uh, but, yeah, yeah, we're briefly going to a closed session after this, and you can talk more about the finance as relates to coming up, things like that, so. Uh, is that all for the MML, Mr.?
Yeah, that's it for MML.
Okay.
Um, the um, one more preliminary planning hearing, I actually um tried to log on to that one, and it was really just a basic hearing, but again, this is um, and I I realized, and I was gonna ask a question when uh Urban Edge uh properties came on board, but I see they have they retain uh Mr. A. Gibbs as their attorney for this, and he actually submitted a um a request to extend the preliminary plan that they have for the uh Woodmore uh Town Center Commercial Site uh, for seven years, and that's just a a formality. Um, all the preliminary plans are only good for seven years, so most developers extend it for another seven years in order to build out completely what they're um um, so they can still have the opportunity to build out the property the way it was originally intended. But I I I do think that, um, like I say, we really need to stay on top of that, so. That's, that's it with that.
No, I'm sorry, that was the Pin Rolls, right? That was the
No, that was one more, one more.
One more planning here, okay. Rolls development?
Yeah, and that's another hearing that um I um actually went and listened to. Um, Councilwoman Ferguson actually sent me a text and said, hey, you know, Councilman, have you seen the changes that they made to uh Pin Rolls? And I was like, okay, I don't know what you're talking about. But then when I got my stuff in my mailbox, I saw that they had changed the uh detailed site plan for, um, they had submitted a request to parking plan and to change the detailed site plan on that development, which really kind of gets me, because I don't ever remember getting a notice in the mail saying that 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 this hearing was coming up on December second. And um, so basically, what they did for the Pin Rolls project is that they actually reduced the number of, they actually eliminated all the three-bedroom apartments. Um, they reduced the number of, I mean, no, they, what they do, they, yeah, they reduced the number of two-bedroom apartments and they increased the number of one bedrooms. So they originally had um eleven-one bedrooms, um, thirty-nine-two bedrooms and ten-three bedrooms. So they went to parking plan and submitted a request to change it to forty-one-one bedrooms, thirteen-two bedrooms and no-three bedrooms. And I'm not understanding why in the world parking plan would have approved that. Now, the problem I have with this whole thing is that um one, we didn't get no, I didn't get notification. I didn't know anything about it. I don't know if any other council member got notification on it. I think we were all supposed to be persons of record, so I talked to some other citizens who actually I know, who actually are um sign of S P uh, pe- people on, people of record, they didn't get a notification, so I don't know why um this December, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I like, I don't know anything about the the hearing that was held on this. Um, I think the hearing was on December second. But the issue I do have, and 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 and, you know, it's not to attack anybody or anything, but on a hearing, they said that they didn't have, they only had one comment from one person. That was Councilwoman Fareed. They were saying that you had a comment, then you withdrew your comments.
No, go ahead, finish your statement and I'll
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying what they said on the, on the audio. I mean, I just saw the video today, and they said you had a comment and um you withdrew your comment, and then the attorney was saying that, well, you know, and I think you really need to clear it up, because they, this out there, that they called you up and they talked to you and you were all right with it, you know, and you didn't have any problem with it. And so I don't, I don't know what it is. I'm just saying what they, what they said on, on, on the tape. I think my issue is, though, that it's a project that's in war too, and a a courtesy should have, courtesy should have been extended to Councilman Harrison if anybody knows about it. Anybody knows about something like this going on in another war, that that courtesy should have been extended to him that, hey, this is what's happening in your ward. You, do you want to make comments? I know I'm gonna make comments. Um, let's um work on this or or whatever, you know. But that wasn't done, um, because I talked to Councilman Harrison, he didn't know anything about it. So I think, and and then, they making it sound like, okay, since, you know, you as a council person didn't have any say in it, that the city is all right with it, you know, and that's what, and I know you're not speaking for the whole city, but it makes it look like you're trying to speak for the whole city, that you made a decision on behalf of this council. Um, you know, we're seven members, that's something that we all as a group should have been apprised of, and we could have discussed it to make sure that um, that's what we, that's, that's in the best interests of the city. I don't understand getting rid of three-bedroom um housing when the ci- when the county is, is basically devoid of any affordable housing. I mean, there's a ten-year waiting list there, you know, people are sitting on this waiting list, there's no housing out here, they're saying, you know. And then you're gonna get rid of three-bedroom um family homes and turn them into one bedrooms, and you're gonna reduce your two bedrooms, you know, and turn them into one bedrooms. And I just think that this, this is, it's important that we work as a body, we work as a group when it comes down to a development. Because I'm gonna tell you this, when a developer sees what happened with Pin Rolls, they're gonna try it with, they're gonna try it with Urban Edge, it's gonna try the exact same thing. There, I mean, I'm telling you, they will go down there and they will submit a a a change to the detailed site plan, and we won't know what's going on. And next thing you know, they'll say, and they said at the, they said in the bottom of um, in the bottom of this document that I have, and they said it um, in the meeting that they had, that there was no comment from the City of Glen Art. And we should have commented on it, because we all worked on that. I mean, it's, I know, well, I know, me, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Ferguson, we won the council when I came up. And, you know, we worked on it. We wanted to make sure it was a a a quality development that was gonna be available to families. And now it looks like it's not, you know, it's geared toward, you know, one bedrooms, you know, which is not really family-oriented uh housing. And I, like I said, with the waiting list being so long in Prince George's County and the lack of affordable housing in Prince George's County for them to get rid of three bedrooms, I think we would have spoke up on that. Um, and again, as it being the Councilman uh Harrison's ward, I'm sure he will have wanted to, wanted to have a say on that. So I just think that we just got to make sure that when something like this comes up, and we know it's going to come up, that the whole council be apprised of what's going on with these developers and these developments, because they like to play games. They'll, they'll, they'll pit one council member against the other. They'll try to, you know, uh, uh, find favor in in the administration, you know. Um, so I I I just think it's very important that we work together on these, on these, on these um, on these projects like this, especially with this um Urban Edge project and the twenty-two acres they got sitting over there. Um, it really, we really got to stay focused on it, because again, if if somebody's already complaining about the woods next to their property, you can imagine what they're gonna do if somebody, if they build an office building there. So. I'm just, I'm just saying, all right. I'm just, I'm just saying, all right, I'm I'm done, thanks.
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify if I could because I I think, I don't think this was your intention, Councilman Herring, but I I think it's sounding at least to me as though I am privy to information that is not available to other council members. I'm I'm pretty certain, I will have to go back into the email, that I actually sent everyone that information um about the fact that there was a meeting upcoming. I think I may have even put it as a topic on uh an agenda at that time. Um, and I think I also forwarded the information, I cannot remember his name, I think his name is Ken or something from the Parks and Planning Department. Um, the reason why I withdrew my comment is I had submitted that, you know, I was going to have a comment. I wanted to speak um or get some clarification on what was going on. He called me. He reached out, wanted to know what my question was about, and in in his explanation to me, what he basically said was, when they were um going to actually like do the bill, and this happens, this is not uncommon in construction, when they were actually going to do the bill, the specifications for how they thought it was gonna be, it didn't really work, so they needed to make some modifications. So everything that you just described does not sound like what he told me. So, you know, I think we have to reconcile that with what was sent to me because he he sent me an email with information. So my um, okay, wasn't to say, yes, go ahead and do what you're doing. It was in his explanation to me of why it was coming about and why there was a change. So my intention was never to speak on behalf of the council or the city of Glen Arden in terms of kind of sanctioning what they were doing. I had a question about why there was a change to what they had come and even presented to us, and he explained it to me as something that is not a typical of what happens during um construction. So I'm happy to gather that documentation. And if I did not resend it to send it out to everyone, but let's just be clear, I was not speaking on behalf of the city or or sanctioning anything that was being
Well, I mean, and I kind of, I mean, I kind of figured that, but but that's what they do. That's what they do. They're they'll tell you one thing, and unless we do our research and, you know, we, they're 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 running by you. They, I mean, because what they said, but the way they made it sound like when they were talking about it also, they made these major changes, but he's like, well, you know, it's on, we're only getting rid of six, we're only getting rid of six apartments. We're going from fifty-four to sixty. Okay, yeah, that sounds like that's nothing, but what they actually is doing is eliminating three bedrooms and two bedrooms and increasing one bedrooms. Saying that's not the information that they're gonna give you. They try to always try to, they, I mean, they always try to give you the old okie doke. And that's what they did, and they always try to get one council member to be like, so now they're throwing your name out there saying, well, you know, Councilwoman Fareed was on there and she's okay with it, you know, and Councilwoman Fareed, she withdrew her objection, so she's fine with it. And I'm just like, but and I'm and I and and I'm, and then they say when they talk to you, I'm like, okay, and I'm sure they probably they probably did the same thing that they normally do. Don't give you the full story. You know, and I think that, and that's why I said we we really gotta be on top of these developers, especially with this Woodmore Town Center project. I'm telling you, I've seen it happen over and over again. They tell you one thing and they'll go down to the parking plan and then submit that application for a change to that DSP, and we'll be sitting there looking at a bunch of who knows what. You know, so, yeah, but I mean, it's, I mean, I'm just saying, that's where they made, that's, that's what they implied on the um, on the meeting that they that they did hold on uh December second, so I went back to listen to it, so. And that's it, that's it for me on our pin rolls.
Okay. Thank you, Council uh Manharian and Councilman Fareed. Uh, quickly before we adjourn to a very quick closed session, um, just want to do a couple consensus. Um, I know I sent the council email earlier uh noting that our session, a regular meeting next week is on Valentine's Day. And to prevent uh our citizens from choosing whether they should spend time with a loved one or come to a very uh invigorating council uh meeting. Um, just want to do a consensus whether we want to push the meeting uh to Tuesday instead of Monday. Um, so you know, just to be clear, uh, you know, if you vote yes, it's to move, it's to uh let's do it this way, yes, to keep it on Monday. Oh, no, I'm sorry, yes, to change it to Tuesday. Uh, and no, to keep it on Monday. So just a consensus, vote yes is to move it to Tuesday, which is February the sixth to fifteenth. If you vote no, then it'll remain on the the Monday, uh, February fourteenth. Um, uh, Councilman Fareed.
I would like to keep the meeting on Monday. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's fine. Uh, Councilwoman Gion.
I'm fine with keeping it on Monday also, and I uh love my family, but um also wanted to say that if we were to even move it on Tuesday, I think that Tuesday would also wouldn't it be considered if we were to have any um special meetings or public hearings or whatever we want to call it, it would be the fifteenth anyway. Because that would be the second Tuesday out of the month. Yeah, if you think about it, so because January thirty-first was Monday, so February one, which was last week, was Tuesday. And then this week, it's the first Monday because last week was January thirty-first, so this is the first Monday, which means tomorrow is the second Tuesday, which is the eighth, and then next week would be the third Tuesday, which is the fifteenth, which is usually reserved for if we have or don't have those meetings, you get what I mean? So so all, all that to say to avoid any possible confusion, I'm fine with um Monday and hoping that it's a nice, quick meeting.
Okay, uh, Councilman Jones.
Uh, that's, this is a real tricky one because of the fact, uh, the um council rules tells us that a meeting should be on the second, I mean, the first, the second Monday. Uh, and being that Valentine's Day is not a national holiday, um, I say we keep it on Monday.
All right, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Councilman Harry.
Um, yeah, that gave me an excuse, so, yeah.
All right, well, yeah, oh, I don't want to disregard anyone. Councilman Hairston.
Uh, it don't make me no difference for real.
Okay.
It made me no difference.
And uh, Ms. Ms. Ferguson, Councilwoman Ferguson.
No.
Okay, all right, so we'll still have the meeting on Monday. We should get to go. Councilman Fareed.
Um, yes, I just, I I I just want to say that on November twenty-fourth, I did send to the link to agenda for that redevelopment meeting on December second as well as a link to register to speak. Um, I I let everyone know that they had it labeled incorrectly on their site. Um, so I was sharing on November forwarded entire council with
I'm sorry, Ms. Fareed, you you're breaking up. But if I could, if I could summarize that.
Councilman Hairston, thank you. For thirtieth, uh, that's when Henry Zhang from the uh development, sorry, from the Development Review Division, sent me information as well as a link to documents in the Dropbox, and I did forward that to the council as well. That was on November thirtieth before the December second meeting.
All right.
Yeah, they said that they were reducing the units from sixty to fifty-four based on finalization with the builder. Below, you'll find a Dropbox link to related files. Um, and I said, although Ms. Lewis sent over our person of record request on October fifth, distribution list had not been updated and the info was sent to former mayor Esby and Mr. Tobias. So I I did make this information available to everyone as well as the information that was shared with me, um, including the Dropbox with all the access to the files prior to that December second meeting. So everyone had access to the information, could have signed up to make comment at the meeting and um, you know, specifically address the changes in the documents um provided.
Thank you, Councilman Fareed. Uh, that's the end of our uh talks of discussion. Um, and as noted in email uh that we would, you know, vote to go into a closed session under section three oh four B one to discuss uh hiring practices. Something hopefully does not take um long. Councilman Harry.
Yeah, you said it's to discuss hiring practices? So we're just talking about policy and procedures?
No, uh, what? Um, about
Are we talking about individuals?
Individuals.
Okay.
Now, and and should not last long.
Because I mean, if it's just about, you know, what we need to do to hire somebody, that's not a closed meeting subject. If we're talking about an individual person, then that is.
Well, I I I mean, we've, we can just uh adjourn a closed session, and if we need to open it up again, then we can, I mean, it's just so we don't get it mixed up. Um, and in that said, so do I have a motion to to close the open session and go into a closed session? So. Move, Ms. Jones, second.
Co- Council President.
One second, we're in the middle of a motion. Second, by Ms. Ferguson, uh, any discussion?
Again, um, Mr. President, I just want to be sure, what are we voting on? Is it to talk about an individual or is it to talk about a policy? I just want to be clear on that before I can vote.
Well, uh, as I recall, we're talking about the hiring of the gold room coordinator and the uh the apartment of uh Public Works, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, any more discussion before we go? Okay, um, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yeah.
Councilman Gion.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
Same.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And uh, Councilman Curtis is yes. Uh, so we will call and close me. Uh, Mayor Cross, one last word before we adjourn and we close me.
Yes, thank you so much. On that financial credit card, I just want to clear the air up. The mayor never requested a credit card in her name. I was told when I came on that one was being ordered, as well as one was being ordered for the city manager. Again, I stand by what I said today, that the treasurer should hold it because it affords for us to have proper bookkeeping. At which case, that's what I needed to say during that session of discussion, so that the citizens are not confused about what the expectations is for the credit card or the credit card policy, that it would rest with the treasurer as per uh my, the mayoral understanding. Thank you so much for the time to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Cross, and you're you're in agreement that it should be cut up, correct?
I don't believe that there should be any credit card out there except for the one for the treasurer. And everyone should go through the treasurer to utilize those credit cards because the treasurer is responsible for adequate bookkeeping. So the need for us to have extra credit cards doesn't make sense. And again, these are decisions that are made, and I'm being told, same as you, that these credit cards are out there. Um, I acknowledge what Councilwoman Jones said earlier, that this should be with the treasurer, one card. There's no need for a policy inasmuch as how we utilize that, and then the tracking and the proper accountability of expenditures on that card to ensure that we don't over overspend our allotments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, with that, uh, this open meeting is closed. Thank you, citizens, and we will see you next week.